Halifax Board of Selectmen, it's Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022. We're starting at 4:30 today. The meeting is being taped by Area 58 and cast out on Zoom. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have some appointments and Mr. Steele, Mr. Bruni, start off with you. Right at 4:30.
So while we're here in Troy, I know you've dealt with this over the past 20 years. We would like to put advertising signs on the ball field fences, elementary school, on playground. It's been a long time coming and there's several reasons behind it. And I've talked to everyone here about it, but it is a good way to make revenue that we can put back into the fields and the fences and the bleachers and all that. And then Dick could probably tell you more about that. But that's what we're looking for and I have a whole plan figured out. You know how much we would charge one year of a sign, two years of a sign. You know whatever we can do with different sizes based on what other towns are doing in our area. That's pretty much why we're here and I could give you more details, but Troy's heard it two or three times over the years, so.
Yeah, I think it's come to pass and we've done our due diligence for the last 15 to 20 years on this issue. And we've checked out the other towns and you know, it's almost like an old Fenway Park thing. It's traditional in a lot of the towns and they do have a good revenue source. It's something that we need, being a small town, not having a, you know, we don't have a huge budget in the rec department. And this, some of this money can go towards, you know, fixing the fields, maintaining the fields. Pete had mentioned about softball, baseball. And I get, I got a call today from the soccer people and they're also, there's been some interest to use the soccer field fences out there too. So you know, it's a, it's a great, as Pete says, a great revenue source. I think it's time and we need to try to get whatever we can, as long as it's done the right way. And again, we've done this, we've researched it and over and over and over again. And I think it's a great thing and it'll work and it'll help the town and the program, the youth programs.
So Troy has voiced his big concern being the advertisement of products that he wouldn't want to see towards children.
Totally agree.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's something that we can, you know, on the side, we could sit down and make a list up of things that definitely shouldn't be. And I think we all know, but we can make a list to make sure that the policies are followed of what type of advertising would go up there.
Because I'm concerned about when you decide to retire.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody else come along and misuse it. Because I'm only concerned has been for bad advertisement. There's a lot of places out there that advertise. You don't need to advertise.
I think where it comes to alcohol, there are a lot of restaurants in town that I know asked about this and want to do it. We haven't had a sponsorship in baseball, softball, or basketball from a liquor store in the 20 years I've been involved. So I don't think that would end now. I don't think there's anybody, any company in town that would, if they weren't jumping in before, why would they jump in now? My, my big target, I think, is your Stop &amp; Shop, Walmart, Dunkin' Donuts. They don't really give us much at all. They would, might want to buy into this because it's something they could renew every year. I, like I say, I don't even have the liquor stores on our radar pretty much because they've never done anything with us in the past. Now, I don't know if your concern is with a restaurant that serves alcohol. I don't know if that's the direction that you want to look into. But as far as like serving alcohol in, you know, whatever else.
I don't have any issues with restaurants.
That's good, that's you're involved. And I, like I said, I don't think you're going to have a liquor store or anything else come in and want to buy them because they've never done anything really else.
What about marijuana?
What's that?
Yeah.
I'm not going to get into that argument, whether we should do it enough or whatever you guys decide, we would be more than happy with if you felt that was. I don't know if anybody checking around town to see if they allow that.
So they can't advertise in places with kids? So they're talking about, they're talking about sponsoring the fireworks? So if they did T-shirts, only the adult-sized T-shirts would be able to display their logo. The kid-sized shirts wouldn't be able to display the logos. But that's, that had come up. And I think that where the sporting fields are all geared towards kids, I don't think that they could. I think, I think we could just set a policy as the board and say, no, no advertising of, you know, liquor stores and marijuana.
Well, Dick knows that I've been very supportive of the recreation programs from the beginning. So I'm not against it as much, I just want to make sure it's done properly.
Yeah, I think Troy has, you know, it hits on the head. And as long as we do the due diligence and make sure that we're all on the same page and if there's a question, we bring it up.
Okay.
And then we make decisions and we make them together. And that's why we're here and that's why it works. So I think, as Troy says, you know, he's the guardian and has seen that and making sure that it goes the right way. I mean, it's a great opportunity as long as we don't, as long as we don't fall asleep on it.
Yeah, driving without license is not allowed.
No. So I briefly talked to Mr. Steele earlier. And if we did a revolving fund, if we added a revolving fund, they'd be able to spend the money as they need towards items without it coming up as a boat every time they want to do work on the fields.
That's how we would like to propose it, that the money goes to the recreation department. I mean, obviously baseball, I have a whole plan, I have a whole figure out how much we should charge, all that stuff, where we can get the signs, how we can let you know where they're going to go and all that stuff. But one of the questions over the years was, where was the money going to go? They didn't want baseball or softball to have the money, which we were fine with. As long as the rec department has it, can put it back into the fields and whatever we need. That's actually win-win for us because we get the money needed for the fields and Dick has to handle it. I don't have to handle it. So that's, that's something we could all work together on. But I personally, you know, running baseball and softball would prefer the direct department had it. But a little, just a little bit of say in.
What is it?
Well, obviously I would call Dick and say, we need this fixed or we need that fixed. But we can work together with it. But I really don't want to take on that responsibility of selling them, ordering them, replacing them if the wind, you know, blows one way. So I think we're on the same page with that too.
So is there an amount that you think you could, what's the largest amount you think you could raise in one year? Because that's how, how much we have to set the revolving fund.
And I thought about that, I wanted to give you that, but I don't know. It's going to take a few years before we build it up. The first year, who knows, you know, we start in a month. So we don't know how much we can sell right now. I think it'll take a couple of years, but there's different ways. A company, and I'll just use, for example, Kerry Oil. Tom wanted to buy a sign, he could buy it for like one year, two years, or three years, you know, discounted price. And I don't know, I don't know until we get a year or two under our belt to know how much we can bring in. But I just know that there is a lot of companies in town that ask us about this all the time. And we don't have to live ourselves to Halifax. It can be anyone in the area because a lot of towns come here. We're part of a league that has 25 different towns in the summer. So we could get area businesses that might want to do that. My goal would be to get 20 signs on each field. And then I think the going rate is about $400 for each sign. I can't do math.
That's too many.
Well, then why don't we set a $25,000 limit? That would give you enough room to run, even if the account built up over a few years, you'd be able to build that up. And if you need more than that, we can always amend it at town meeting.
Yeah, time works. You're the ones.
Yeah, no, that, that works.
That makes sense because if they do the three years, yeah.
Okay, so.
Preliminary.
Make a motion to allow youth and rec to have a revolving fund for advertisements in the amount of $25,000?
That sounds like a reasonable number. I'll move it.
I second it.
Okay.
Right, we have a question. So $25,000, that means we can only take in 25, like, can we take in $25,000? What if more people want to buy signs, like soccer wants to get, you know, five down at Summit or whatever, do we have to start at that amount?
Yep.
I don't think we're going to get that high, but if, you know, asking now before, you know.
Do you want 35? It just depends on what you're going to have in there. The amount doesn't really matter. Because set it for 40.
I'd go with 40.
Okay.
Just to be safe. Yeah. I mean, it's, I mean, it's not, it's not something that we're going to try to achieve a goal. Let's get 40, it's just being optimistic maybe possibly. If it gets to 40, now the things that we can do, you know, fencing is, the fencing's bad if you've been out back. These are things that are going to have to be, you know, worked on in the next few years. So it's something that we can certainly help out with. You know, and there were some other things too. So 40 would work if it works for you people.
Troy?
Well, it's an unknown factor, but 40 is a good silver. At least you fall, we're setting that the first couple of years, you mean fall within that range.
Yeah, it just needs to be voted each year. So you could, I mean, if you guys had 30 in the, in the account, you think you're going to raise another 30, we just amend the number at town, at the following town. Yeah, it's not, it's just the limit for the first year. And as you find out information, we can amend that. Yeah, all right, so would you friendly amendment your to 40?
Full amendment.
Do you second that?
I second it.
To 40.
Can you change your mind as well?
He amended it, I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you both very much for coming in.
Thank you for the great work you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Just remember, you got the future of the town in your hands.
Yeah, still, for a few more years anyway, all right.
Before our next appointment. Where is? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11.
I don't know where you are or where you were.
4:45.
I was just going to ask Lori if she wanted to present right now? You got two, two minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's a request to use the Town Hall Green for a buzz-off for Onemission.org and a second use of the Town Hall Green for Pride in Halifax.
So I'm going to let my son James, who is our team captain for the buzz-off, talk about that request.
Sorry, didn't really prepare. Um, so I've been doing the buzz-off for like six years and this will be my sixth. It's a really fun event. We did it last year, as you know. Sorry, I keep saying, um.
It's not easy to get okay.
Yeah.
So, so the event is going to be Sunday, May 22nd, from 12 to 3 for fundraising. So can you tell us how do people get involved?
So, yeah, well, they, we put out a sign and people driving by will pull over or they'll see that something's going on and like it will say donate or something. And people like to help, so.
What size is the sign?
It's a banner that's like about that, by that. I don't have the exact dimensions. We put it up last year at the actual, the day we did it. So the past two years, it's been held at Gillette traditionally. The past two years, they went virtual because of the pandemic. So we kind of got creative about how our team would buzz. And last year, we bought, we used the lawn. We let people come and walk on and buzz. A lot of people just walked up and gave donations. One person showed up and got commitments for like, I think it was like $15,000 or $1,500 like that day. So it was a huge fundraiser for us. We were the sixth highest team in the state that raised money, which was pretty cool. And we have a goal of $7,000 this year, so.
I went last year.
Yes, thank you.
It was great. They did a really good job. There was nothing I saw that would cause any issue. There wasn't any traffic. They set up great, they cleaned up great. I have no issue with it.
So do we all let our hair grow out for the next one, two months?
Yeah, I mean, we welcome that.
That would be great. Shave, well, not me, but shave your head. We could probably raise some money if people want to put cloakers to your head.
I bet.
Absolutely. And we are actually looking for team members. We, we, we had advertised in the Halifax Puntor Reporter and they did a couple of articles last year, so we'll spread the word that way too.
Okay.
Great, I have no issue with it. I would say yes.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, thank you very much. And then the second one was Pride in Halifax. Is that the same day?
It's a different day. It is in June. So last year, a small group of town residents had a standout in front of the Walmart area on 106, just, you know, holding peace flags and, not peace flags, rainbow flags. And just to raise awareness about LBDQIA plus Pride Month, which is during everywhere. It was the first event, if you want to call it that, ever in Halifax that any of us are aware of. We also got press in the newspaper. We want to do something again this year. After we had it, we had a lot of people outreach and say, I wish we'd know, you know. Several towns, Little Barre Pond, I believe, want to do similar types of things. We have residents in town that are part of that community. And so we want to do something a little different on the front lawn. We actually have plans to maybe talk to the GSA, the Gay Street Alliance Club at the high school, talk to the music department to, you know, hopefully have some maybe entertainment, maybe a DJ. But we're, we're still in the planning phases at this point. So we'd be open to any concerns the town has.
So you're looking for Saturday, June 12th? Uh, no, sorry.
I think it's the 25th.
25th.
June 25th.
25th.
June, the time is from 12 to 3, sorry.
Correct. So we don't anticipate a ton of traffic. We don't, and we planned it to be on a day that, you know, it's a Saturday, so it wouldn't interfere with town business. We don't anticipate, because of the window of time, any like public toilet needs or anything like that.
Okay. Motion to approve? So Lori, so you second?
I have a second. Just if you get to a point where you think there's going to be a big crowd, obviously keep the police chief involved. And like you were talking about, you know, DJs, if food trucks, anything like that come about, that involves the Board of Health. So if it gets bigger than what you think, just make sure we go through the proper department so that we're not approving something and then not following through with everything.
Yeah, we're in the very initial stages and the small group of us that are trying to plan it. In fact, I'm the only one that could make it tonight, so they would have come. But we're meeting monthly to kind of, you know, we all have our part. So I can give updates in the future if that would be.
If you just think that there's going to be other things added that might be different than what we talked about, just keep us in the loop so we make sure everyone's, but I second it.
All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you very much, thank you both.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night, thank you. Thank you, Troy.
Okay. Mr. Perry? Sorry for the delay. Ready for your request?
Are we talking 638 Montpontis right now?
Yes, 638 Montpontis.
Yeah, we went in front of the, the chief and I, I didn't go. The chief did it in front of the planning committee last night.
Okay.
We put a request in to transfer $12,000 into the unsafe building account because of the issues at 638 Montpontis Street. We've tried numerous times to contact the owners, also the bank. No response basically, so we have to take it into our own hands and we moved the building. It is in very poor condition and unsafe.
Okay.
So that was approved last night.
Okay.
We are in a soliciting bid, we, if we need one more bid, written bid, we can rescue.
Okay.
Also, there's going to be a lien place on the property as well. It's already thought secured by the town.
Okay, that's, that's good news. And then while you're here, you had another.
Yeah. Budget item. Basically, there was $2,300 roughly thereabouts in a line item under the billing department for an assistant billing inspector. As you know, at this time, we have a gentleman that is doing the typical occupancy and alien inspections. So he is paid as a subcontractor. So I propose to take that, $2,000 and change from that line item, put it in my expense account where I can pay the inspector directly from that account where is a subcontract that I employ.
Okay. I, I think that we can make this motion at the meeting in April. Because it's going to be within the last three months of the year to do line item.
So, Captain, instead, we put a transfer, well, we put the account on notice already that we want to transfer any monies that are left in May 1st into our expense account. Take care of any downfall, shortfall we may have.
Okay.
But this is for, obviously, the new year coming up. Instead of putting all that money into an assistant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I don't, we don't want to lose the assistant unless we can get the assistant back at some point. I don't want to lose that position. But I want to take the majority of the money and put it into expenses so that I can take care of the COs and the alien inspection.
Okay, so that's.
$2,300?
That's the.
It's, I think, yeah, it was a couple of thousand, 20, I think it's 2345 in there. But I just want to transfer like a couple of thousand out of there. Then we sent that letter, I'm just talking about going full.
Yeah, I was about to say, you need to leave something and keep that account open.
Right, right. That was, that was my thought.
Okay, so that's just more information.
However you see fit.
Okay. As long as the finance committee has it on the.
Yeah, I think they just wanted, because we were transferring the money, or they wanted some documentation from the OBO.
Okay. Sir, motion to recommend?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you.
Chair, anything else?
I think that's it. Thank you.
How far did you get before I got here?
Uh, we waited the first appointment, we just had the first appointment.
So do you want me to do the warrant signature? Do you want to wait till the end? About 5 o'clock, so we have like seven minutes.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's coming in for that 5.
Yeah, I don't know, I know Ted's not coming in, but I follow the buyer.
Okay.
There was a letter in there from Ted.
Okay.
Okay. This.
That's what I was thinking. You go with that?
Yeah, go for it.
All right, so did you do the meeting minutes?
We had, no, we, we literally just went right into the appointment when we opened, did the pledge and went right into the.
So do you want a motion for approval of the meeting minutes from February 22nd, 2022?
So moved.
All in favor? Yes, second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye. Okay, and then I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 82 for $377,038.18. Vendor warrant number 83 for $56,679.43. And the withholding warrant number 84 for $127,865.22.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I affirm approval of ambulance commitment from 2/28 to 3/6/22 for $33,592.68. And ambulance commitment from 3/7 to 3/13/22 for $13,132.69.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye. I move to affirm payment of the following Selectmen bill, Ellis Auto Body, for $4,868.65.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any names?
I move to approve the following warrants. Vendor warrant number 85 for $68,126.81. School warrant number 72. It's kind of a typo for, that can't be right.
Yeah, that's, yep, it's for $693.
There's a comma there, okay. Well, we'll go with it, so.
Yeah, it's 600, it's 698.74.
Six, that seems weird. 698.74. It was like, that's weird, okay.
I know, because I get both.
I was like, am I missing a number? I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing a number. All right, so I move that.
Second.
Oh, what you call that one?
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
And then I move to approve the following Selectmen bills. National Grid for $1,197.22. Uh, this was one that we just did, the Ellis Auto Body. William August for $70. Brooks and Durentzis for $24,570.48.
I'll second those.
You got to call that all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
That's all I got.
Okay. Ed, it looks like you're on. Do you want to unmute? Caesar, can you unmute him? Hey, Ed.
Okay, I'm good.
How you doing?
All right. I'm still dressed like I was going to go there.
So we have in the packet, we have the Solitude Treatment Contracts.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we just need the motion to approve the fee for the service. This is the phosphorus inactivation treatment at East and West Basins, the Montpontis Pod, using buffered alum at a dose of eight grams per mass squared, including treatment water monitoring, monthly water quality and algae monitoring from April to October for a total of $183,450. Is there a motion to approve and allow the chair to sign?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is for the stio bacteria.
Okay. Okay. And then we have the next contract.
Give me that so I can give it to Pam and it doesn't get mixed in and everything because she's going to be looking for it.
The next contract is the Whole Pond Treatment, East and West, with Sona, which is Floridone herbicide to control non-native fan wart. I'm not even going to try to pronounce the scientific name.
Just try, give it your best.
Variable milfoil and Eurasian milfoil. Cost is $242,750. Sir, motion to approve?
Now, part of that money is available already, yeah?
Yes. Yep.
I'll move it.
I second.
And to allow the chair to sign?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, this is the re-treatment for Whole Ponds.
Okay. All right. Okay. The rest, Ed, is executive. The rest, Ed, is executive session? Update?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, so we have a five o'clock appointment. Now, we have the continuation of the hearing. The transfer of the alcohol beverage license from Lily Cafe Two to Dragon Lake Village Inc. Uh, I will open the hearing again.
So, as in, uh, they, I lost, uh, we see for the band, uh, commitment yet.
Okay.
So, uh, I don't know, since they, uh, you know, hard to, I keep push there and they, uh, still not give me the answer for the commitment until I allow. So, um, I don't know, how can I do my now, since, uh, mostly?
Your lawyer here seems to be asking from May twenty-second?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
May twelve or whatever.
May ten, twenty-two.
So, uh, then, for the, they extend for the commitment to the, uh, May ten. And just for the closing day, two days. Make that the closing days in May twelve.
Okay.
So the commitment come up on the May ten.
Yep.
So they, I push them, they say, not many, I mean, if I prove, prove you will be, you know, before closing day, I prove for you, so. I say I need the commitment go to the heating.
Right.
So, and they say, same, you know. Don't worry about it, and, and, and sometime I say, and nothing can be sold upon the board. So, um.
So.
Maybe I, I can let you know, instead, uh, I already talked to other thing. If other thing quicker to getting my loan, they will be much more take care of it and, uh.
So for now, wanna continue till the next meeting and then we, or can we not do that?
I think with, in, in the letter.
Or not allowed to.
I think what he's trying to say is that if, um, he doesn't want to waiting until they sign up purchase and sales.
Yeah.
That's pretty much, so I did contact ADCC and I said, how long can we hold on to this application? They said, as long as it takes, but I don't think he needs two to three years. I just think that he needs until the letter can, cause I said that he didn't have closing date until.
May twelve.
May twelve. So I think from holding on to the application, I think you can hold on to the application. But again, I think the fella wants to make sure that there is a purchase and sales and a letter commitment. I think, you know, they wanna make that happen, to say that, so I think that would be logical.
So we could do, we could put you on for May tenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause, yeah, cause the, the, if they cannot close him on the twelfth, then I would imagine that the purchase, you know, it's.
Yeah, you should have everything in place, if, if you're gonna close on the twelfth, I would think that you should have everything.
Yeah, maybe I can, if I are looking for other band, and if other band give me the proof or closing early.
Yeah.
I can closing early.
Right.
To do the purchasing and closing early, so.
Yeah, do what you have to do, it'll strain.
But I don't believe that in band of American and, you know, without, I extend them for the day for the commitment to the May ten, and they, I could ask them, they say, plenty time for that, you know? But between I and my already appetizing, uh, uh, application on the heating, I need that.
Yeah.
It's, they did not really.
May tenth, the day after, um.
May after town meeting.
Meeting, it might go to.
Yeah, I mean, we, I mean, we typically have a meeting that night. So, we could. Which, we could motion to continue the hearing until.
May tenth.
May tenth at.
Over the element, you might have.
At six P M.
On town meeting at six-thirty, we got.
That's the day after town meeting, isn't it?
Yeah, before it goes tonight.
Oh.
Five-thirty? Continue to fi- five-thirty?
It shouldn't take that long to, to make a decision on.
Yeah, me, I already talked to other band. I, I not trust band of American without, because my so strong, my personal financial statement is very stronger for the bottle that, that much money. And I don't know why they, they, you know, they keep doing that much longer for me. You, you, you not trust me, I, I can get to the matter.
No, 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 that, that's fine, we ju- we just need a motion to continue the hearing.
Yeah.
So, we do May tenth at five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
So moved.
And if, if something else happens, you can just send us a message and either we continue it or approve it that night.
Oh, okay, if I closing early, maybe I let you know, or, or when you closing, maybe I let you know.
Yeah. Yeah, if you close early, we can always change the, we can vote to amend the, the meeting.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you so much, sorry about that.
No problem, so.
Good luck.
Do an official.
I move.
Second.
To continue the hearing for a transfer alcohol beverage. License from Lily Cafe Two to Dragon Lake Village to May tenth at five-thirty.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
You too.
Wish you the best of luck if it goes through.
Oh, yeah, I know, keep, keep talk to them and, you know, and send me the email, they say, ah, I, I not done yet, not done. I talked to other band today, so they, they send me the strong letter, they, hundred percent I put to you, you can go trust me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So. There's a proposed article from Halifax Fireworks, which would be for the special.
Okay.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of thirty-three hundred dollars per police and fire for the fireworks event on June twenty-fifth. So, that's a requested article to include. So, is there a motion to?
Put it on, put it on the warrant? So moved, second.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, and while we're doing that, uh, we got a request in from Scott. And Sandy. Um, let me open up the email. So there's a request for an article to, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of eleven thousand to replace the front door at the town hall or take any action their own. Might as well put that on the special.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
So moved, or a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, those two articles will be on. Uh. So gasoline and diesel fuel, Board of Selectmen needs to vote to go out to bid, so we need a motion to go out to bid. Gasoline and diesel fuel, um, the Halifax Board of Selectmen is accepting sealed bids for annual bunk deli- uh, bulk deliveries from July first, twenty-twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. And for a period up to two years thereafter, of annual deliveries of thirty thousand gallons plus or minus of gasoline and eighteen thousand plus or minus gallons of diesel fuel. Bids must be signed, sealed in an envelope, clearly marked gasoline bill, bid, and sent to the Board of Selectmen Town Hall, four ninety-nine Coleman Street, Halifax, Mass, zero two three three eight. Bids must be received no later than two P M on Thursday, May fifth, twenty-twenty-two. Bids will be publicly opened at two fifteen on Thursday, May fifth, twenty-twenty-two in the Selectmen's meeting room at the Town Hall. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Alright. Uh, cemetery deeds.
You're doing a really good job today, Gordon, staying in order.
Thank you. Uh, we have, uh. Two, right? So this is for Edward and Marg- Margaret Schind- Schindler.
Thanks to Pam for, uh, putting this together easy for you, huh?
Yeah, thank you, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
But you kept it this time.
Okay. Moved it, so we seconded.
Alright, there's two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Should ask Pam to go to the other side of the table now.
No, she likes sitting next to me better. She likes to send, she put all the colored sticky notes on there for you to be easy to follow.
Alright, so next up, uh, we have a town bank form for the Halifax Cultural Council. Uh, Pam is willing to go on. And the council is in need of members for a vote to be taking on the fiscal year twenty-two grant that has been allocated.
She's a cultural person.
Yeah, alright, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
As long as it doesn't take from all the time I need from her, yes, I second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Pam, let me know when you want me to sign that card too.
Oh, yeah, it's got, I forgot.
Make sure you get sworn in before you look.
Okay, uh, declare surplus equipment, um, from the library director, Gene Glunt. Um, the Homes Public Library would like to declare the following equipment a surplus, three round tables stored in the Y, uh, Y A area. This is the result of the library being awarded the S, sorry, L S T A award for the children's room. The room needs to be made for new equipment purchased through the grants. All those, is there a motion to approve the surplus?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, um, next up is declare surplus I T. Um, we have a computer Dell OptiPlex three thousand ten Windows seven, twenty sixteen, and an HP eighty-six ten laser jet printer, twenty fourteen. Is there a motion to approve? I mean to declare surplus?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up, uh, we have declare equipment from the I T. Uh, I'm requesting the Board of Selectmen declare equipment listed below a surplus.
Can you just do that?
Uh, I, there was two, one Gene had, uh.
Gene had two.
Yeah. So, uh, H B color laser jet printer, two Dell monitors, Lenovo desktop computer, Dell desktop computer, H B desktop computer, Royal Alfa, five eighty cash register, one Epson flatbed document scanner. Is there a motion to declare surplus?
Moving.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Great. Alright, uh, we have a site plan, uh, that we've been C C'd on, uh, from elevated routes. And then we have, uh, is Pete, can you unmute Pete?
Good, how are you?
Good, how are you, sir?
You're well, sir, appreciate the opportunity.
So, we have a form from the Cannabis Control Commission requesting that the town is confirming elevated routes is in compliance with municipal bylaws and ordinance. So. We should allow the special permit to go forward so that they make that determination.
So, this, this, uh, part of the process is not related to whether or not we, uh, have been awarded a, a special permit. Uh, and it can give the Board a couple of examples of this, so this is confirming that we have not done anything and are not currently in violation of town bylaws, which certainly we're not. But it, but it doesn't, this doesn't say that we've received all of our local permitting. Uh, for example, we may get our, um, special permit, this is an example. Uh, and then we would still need to get a certificate occupancy later, right? And so, the processes go back and forth between the town and C C C. So this is just the Board confirming we're not in violation of the bylaws, which we're not as far as we're aware. Um, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean that all of our permitting is done. You still need a, a special permit, a site plan review, certificate occupancy, uh, inspections for municipal departments, including fire, police. So this does, this is not a sign on saying everything's done, this is just saying we're not in violation of the bylaw. Uh, many towns in the Commonwealth actually require, uh, your provisional license before you can even file for your special permit. So those towns all would sign this as well. Um, and so, this is really a separate matter, separate, distinct from the local permitting process. And we also highlight that our host community agreement, uh, also says that, um, nothing in that host community agreement or otherwise, um, uh, lead, uh, rel- relieves us from our responsibility for all our local permitting and approvals. So there really wouldn't be a time, if you say, well, we think you need all your approvals before we can sign this, there wouldn't ever be a time to sign it until we were open, and we can't get open without a license, and we can't get a license without this approval.
I.
So it does go back and forth, I, I would say we're, we're in compliance with the bylaws now, if, if the Board may be aware, we submitted all of our applications, it's a planning department, and we have a hearing scheduled on, on April seventh. Um, so this is just part of the process where it goes back and forth between the town and the C C C. So this is, we, you know, if, if the town agreed we weren't in violation of any of the bylaws, uh, then they would sign this and repair it to C C C, and we would still continue with all our permitting processes and, and inspections and anything else that would be needed.
So I think we should send this to our zoning enforcement officer just to have him affirm that, cause he's gonna be the one that's checking and make sure that all the bylaws are being followed. It's not really our, you know, we're not going through all the bylaws to make sure everything is in compliance. So I'd like to send that to him and then put this on the agenda for the next meeting. Is that fine with the Board?
Yep. I think that's a good idea, cause he's.
Sure.
But what is the timing matter with the enforcement officer?
I'd request him to get.
Certain date?
Request him to get it back to us.
Is there a date on that?
So this, we, this we need to get back within sixty days.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
So if we ask him to get this back to us by the next meeting.
If I could make a potentially suggestion, um, could the Board vote for you to sign it pending, um, review and approval by the zoning officer? If we wait to the next meeting, that may push us to, uh, another meeting with the C C C, which would be about, uh, six, four weeks.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
If, if the Board finds it.
I don't have any problems.
Pending his approval, uh, the Board authorized you to sign it, that way if, in fact, he's comfortable that we're not currently violating any bylaws, we could move it forward.
Yep.
That, that's, that's a fair.
That's fine.
Request, is, there's a motion to that effect?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much for that suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate your consent.
Okay. Um. So next up is the fee increase from the town clerk, so. Um, there's a letter from the town clerk, um, fee increases for birth, death, and marriage certificates. At the recent department head meeting, you had asked that we look into our fees to see if they were comparable to other communities. It was found that a majority of our neighboring communities were charging ten dollars per certificate. We are currently charging five, but you asked Selectmen's meeting on March eighth, the Board voted to increase those fees to ten dollars. I'm asking that this cha- change not take effect until July first, twenty-twenty-two to ensure that we can notify the community of the increase before it occurs.
Fair request.
Yep.
So, uh, is there a motion to set the date to increase the fees, uh?
As of July first?
As of July first?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have a proposal from Silver Lake for the H V A C system at the middle school and high school. So, um, we didn't have this document the last time. So this request is to use the ARPA fed, ARPA funds towards, uh, the H V A C system. Uh, Tom O'Brien is aware of the request and was willing to work with Silver Lake to make sure that the funds available came out and wouldn't interrupt the other projects that the towns have moving forward. So, it'd be part of phase one, but it might be more money than some towns have in phase one.
Okay.
So is there a motion to approve four hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars? That's Halifax's share.
Is that one payment or is this just a full share?
So the, um, that's our full share from Halifax, the total project is one million five hundred and forty-seven thousand.
I'll move it.
You've checked the lines to make sure we have the money to move from there with Sandy?
Yeah.
Okay, I second it.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Alright. So we did the next two requests out of order, uh, we have an. So we did the next two requests out of order. We have an amended site plan from the planning board for 115 River Street, and that's for the solar array. Anyone has any comments, please get back to the planning board. Next up, we have a road opening at the intersection of 13th Ave and Lingan Street. Conservation still needs to sign off.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve with highway and police recommendations?
As long as conservation signs up, yes.
If you guys want to do it now, you can do that. Wait for the confirmation. She got a present. If she didn't have the paperwork, then she's coming up.
If conservation approves it, then yes, I motion it.
So is highway and police due to?
They all, they have one else due, I was just waiting for approval to continue.
Alright, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
So next up, we have earth removal. So the town's engineer land planning is unable to take on the earth removal project from Morris Brothers on behalf of the town. Pam received the recommendation that Kevin Grady of Grady Consulting LLC, who was Morris Brothers engineer for the previous project. The board will need a vote to contact the firm that will be willing to take this on. I would recommend that we contact Amory.
That was what I thought.
I would recommend we contact Amory engineers to have them review the project. They're talking about a lot of material to be removed. And I went back and I watched the previous meetings. That was 2016, 2017 timeframe, and there were a lot of concerns from residents over the usage and the number of trucks and the number of travel.
The main concern was deterioration of the road, with the heavy loads that they were bringing across there, and the time schedule. Whether they were doing it while kids were in school, and what hours they were going to have.
Okay. So moved. It did, it did bring up to another item that I'd like to add is a, an article at the annual, actually the special town meeting, which would be to change the fee that the chart, the town charges per yard from 25 cents to a dollar. I think that the amount of material that they're talking about bringing out and the amount of work that would be needed to repair Lingan Street, they previously had a bond, but that bond didn't actually get used to cover any of the...
Well, one of the requirements was to have a bond in place anyway, and then whether you want to raise it from 50,000 to 100.
But, I would just think if, if we increase the fee from 25 cents to a dollar. I, I saw the meeting minutes from 2010, Pam had brought those up. The fee changed from 10 cents to 25 cents. At the time, Pembroke and other towns were 50 cents. And I, I just think with the cost of materials to rebuild any road in town, I think if the town's going to allow a project to move forward like this, we need to be concerned about replacing the roads as well.
We should look at some of the other towns around us too.
So...
Get comparable prices, just like we just did with the fees.
So, I was looking to, to add an article to the special under, I don't know if I printed that, but I guess not. Pam, do you remember what chapter? Was that 141?
You took a picture of it.
Thank you.
Right, was that, was that not earth removal? Yeah, I think it was 141.
Yep, so, I, I would, I would like to add an article to the special that would, this permit would be subject to a fee of $1 per cubic yard or more, as determined by the board, payable to the town of Halifax. Any inspections by the engineer of the town's choice to ensure the work being done follows the approved plans and this section shall be paid by the applicant.
Sounds fair.
Yeah. Is there, I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Are we going to check and see what the other towns are doing, or are you just going to go off that?
I, I want to just go off the dollar, because the, in, the cost of replacing the road is, it's, the cost of materials has skyrocketed since 2010.
You think that's going to cover all of it? Like, how did you just get that number?
I looked at the cost of materials after talking to Steve.
So you did talk to Steve?
Yeah.
Okay. Does Dave agrees with it?
Yeah. I mean, the way that it's worded right now, the town, it says the fee is 25 cents per cubic yard or more, as determined by the board. I just think with the cost of materials of asphalt, and actually to build the base, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support any earth removal project that didn't bring back at least a dollar per yard.
Okay.
So.
I should have come in.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll have that on the special. So the road opening, earth removal. So, we have, Pam will reach out to Amory and see if they're able to take this on? Okay. Memo from the Board of Health. Good morning at the March 16th, 2022 Board of Health meeting. The board voted unanimously to nominate, reappoint Brian Kling as the animal inspector for Halifax. His term will run from May 1st, 2022 to April 30th, 2023. So, on March 8th, the board closed out the earth removal permit for Morris Brothers 250 Lingan Street. The board also must vote to release the falling bond. It's a $50,000 performance bond issued by Weston Sherry Company. Now, how, how was there going to be a claim, Troy? That was one thing that I didn't hear was going to be done, if there was going to be a claim on the bond.
Well, the bond's in place with a very purpose, for repair of roads, or if they do, if they don't follow the process which they've written down, laid out for us, $50,000 will cover any and all expenses on that.
Okay, so that, because we closed it out, and we didn't, we didn't find them anything on the bond, so we have to vote to release the bond, correct?
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion to release the bond?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Well, I just want, so on the road, before you guys closed out the, the earth removal permit, I did contact Steve, and he did go down there, and he said the road wasn't any, because they took a video of the road itself when they first came, you know, for the, for the road, for the earth removal permit. And he said the road does not look any different than what it was when they started the project. So he did look on the film and stuff, and he went down there. So I did get it's okay before we decided to close out that, that earth removal. Release the bond.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to reappoint Janice Haywood and Kathleen McLaughlin to the Halifax fireworks committee? Terms to expire August 31st, 2025.
Did you?
So moved.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
So now we need to vote the article and ballot question for the council on aging project. So, oh, you printed it up too. So the, so the article would say to see if the town will vote to appropriate... No, I thought when I talked to Sandy.
I thought those monies that were already allotted in another bill, we just never used it.
Yes.
I disagree.
No, right.
Well, it was the bond.
From the bond for the school.
Right.
She, so, I thought when I talked to her, she said, don't put the amount, not the amount on the ballot, that's what it was. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $1,500,000 or any other sum of money for renovations related to the council and aging facility, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, and to determine whether the appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any action relative thereto. So...
She didn't want the amount put on it?
But the amount on that, but not, not include...
It's on for town meeting, but not for the ballot, right?
Not for the ballot, not to put the amount to the ballot.
Oh.
So, is there a motion to that?
I move it.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we need to vote to put on the ballot, shall the town of Halifax be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2.5, so-called the amounts required to pay for the bonds to be issued in order to pay the costs relating to renovations or relating to a council and aging facility, including payment of costs for incidental or related thereto?
Is there not another way to word that?
And it says pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, subsection 21, C, sub-paragraph K, the board of selectmen must vote by two-thirds to place the question before the voters at a regular or special election, and the question must appear in the warrant for election at which is to be considered. In addition, the warrant for the election must be posted and or published in accordance with the provisions of the town's bylaws relating to calling of town elections. So, the motion that I read would be to place on the ballot, shall the town of Halifax be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2.5, so-called the amounts required to pay for bonds to be issued in order to pay for costs relating to renovations relating to a council and aging facility, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto? So, I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Just to make everyone aware, we, when we move forward with borrowing on the school project, we borrowed more money than was necessary because we received more reimbursement grants, grants from the state program. So this money, if it's not used, will just sit in account for the next eight years before the town can do anything with that. So this will not increase anyone's tax bills to allow for this project to move forward. So this will be allowing us to use this money before inflation really deteriorates the cost of moving forward with the project at the library, at the former library, which is now the Halifax Museum.
So it's like buy now or pay later?
Buy now.
Well, we pay, we're paying no matter what.
Yeah, and it's going to improve the, the whole landscape of that whole area, so it's going to...
It's going to look beautiful.
Yeah, and it's going to look beautiful, but it also too is going to bring it up to the means. You know, and if it were to happen years from now, it's going to be more expensive to do. So, it's, it's, it's a win-win in a lot of ways, because it's going to, as we age, of course, the community will be aging unfortunately. I mean, it is what it is, and it's all good.
Why do you look at me when you say that?
So we have to develop all these wellness programs. We're going to have that pickleball. So we have that little, little place there, so it's going to be a lot of good, positive programs that are, we're going to just integrate into this new building. It'll be on one level, you know?
You're going to come talk at town meeting?
Absolutely. And I have the, I was working on a project so that we could actually see it all made. You know, the, the architect's plans, so, the whole wrinkle could be kept looking at them. But, you know, I was hoping that we could actually get a CAD, AutoCAD of it, but it's a little bit expensive. But I'm going to see if that actually Bridgewater University might have somebody as a student might, you know, be considered, you know?
It's a good idea.
Might want to do it, yeah, in the internal project. Even a possibility of having a model made, so just a simple model, just to look at it. You know, and I don't know if I have to have it approved to place it somewhere, you know, that people could see it maybe last year at the library. Or somewhere that would be visible to the public so they could see and ask questions. You know, of course, we had some people called already to wonder why we weren't going to have the option of having Henry Call. And, you know, there's a, you know, it was a negative and a positive of a lot of that, so. But I think going forward, this is, this is, it's just a positive. It's to have it in terms of the construction for the buildings itself. It's near the town hall. It's going to be near the museum, and, you know, once everything does get moved over to where we are, it's just, it's going to be a real nice little triad of just information. And, yeah, I think it's, it's a perfect spot for it. Not too busy with regard if it was down, everybody keeps talking about the, the happy dragon, but it was so busy down there, I think, for, you know, seniors to participate. So this is a perfect location.
I think you've done a great job, and you've really looked at all options and thought outside the box and been really creative, so I thank you for doing that.
Appreciate your, your input as well, so it was, it was a good thing, and we did look at that.
I like our field trips together.
We had a lot of good field trips. Yeah, it was great, thank you, yeah.
So all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Alright. So that's, so alcohol on town property, this one's mine.
Of course it is.
Give up drinking? So right now, we have a bylaw, which is Section 55, Section 1, which says that consumption of alcoholic beverages, open containers, was amended at the May 11th, 2009 Annual Town Meeting, Article 34. No person shall, while in or upon any street, sidewalk, public way, footway, passageway, stairs, bridge, park, playground, beach, recreation area, boat landing, public building, schoolhouse, school grounds, cemetery, parking lot, or any area owned or under the control of the town of Halifax, whether in or upon a vehicle or on foot, consume an alcoholic beverage as defined by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, Section 1, as amended or possess an open container of such beverage. And I would like to amend that article to say, without a liquor license being issued by the board of selectmen.
Because you think people will try to have events at a town building that needs alcohol?
It's a possibility, where right now, you cannot.
I'll say, sorry. Did you check with the police chief on that?
Chief, you on?
Yes, good.
So, so my request to change here is you'd have to be issued a liquor license from the board of selectmen.
You know, what happens to like our liability with the town and our insurances or something if we let someone have an event at the town hall that has liquor and somebody leaves?
So other communities allow people to have events at their library, or a wine tasting, or something like that. And I would like to have that possibility to do something like that here in Halifax.
I'm not disagreeing, but I want to know what that's going to do to our insurance and who becomes liable if somebody gets sloshed at a book wine tasting and leaves at the playground and takes out again.
Okay.
So I'm not going to vote on that until we know all the liability on it.
So I'm requesting that we put it into the warrant. Because if we don't put it into the warrant now, we can pass over it if the board doesn't feel comfortable with the answer with, from the insurance company.
Did you look into any of that?
I had not gotten to that far yet. I just know that other communities allow events like that to take place.
I just, I'm wondering what the cost of that is going to be to the town.
I can't, you know, our insurance, because the town will have to take some potential liability if, if there's an event. Obviously, the, with the vendor or the person that's proposing the, the event will have to, you know, get some sort of line, but I believe you'd have to be quite clear that the town will not be, you know, there's, there's...
There's just a lot that goes into that. And then who's serving it? Are they served safe certified? How are we going to make sure no one under the...
There have to be a lot to...
There's a lot of stuff.
So it, it all has, you'd still have to go through the same one-day liquor license that private individuals have to go through when they... that private individuals have to go through when they come before the board for a one-day license. It would just give opportunity to do that on town-owned property.
I, I want to see what the liability to the town is on that and what the cost it's going to incur. But, I mean, that's up to you and Troy. That's my opinion.
I agree.
Okay. So we have James Comey to be appointed as a Democrat member of the Board of Registros as of April 1st, 2022, term to expire on March 31st, 2025. Is there a motion? Sue did reach out and talk to them to make sure that they were available to come in and be put on the Board of Registros and available to sign papers.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous. And then Daniel McIver, appointed as an unenrolled member of the Board of Registros from April 1st, 2022, term to expire on March 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor, aye? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The 5G policy. So we were presented.
Yeah, this is in the warrant.
It's in the warrant?
Yeah, it's all red. I don't remember the pages, but it's, it's Article 48.
This is coming to the bylaw committee? Is there any bylaw committee meeting Wednesday?
Yep. So we have it in the, so I was told that the board could vote to approve this as a policy, and then the town can act on it to have it as a bylaw.
Okay.
So I would, I would make the motion to approve what's contained within Article 48 as the town's bylaw on 5G until the zoning is acted upon.
I move it.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. So then I sat down with Pam, Sandy, Sue. Who else did we have there?
Ed.
And Ed?
Yeah.
And we went through the articles. Although the ones that we added tonight, we do have some recommendations from the Finance Committee. So that's where those stand for right now.
Okay.
So. Do we have a next line ready or no?
I don't have an amount, but we're going to have to vote to go to the Finance Committee. So if we want to vote that, and I'll get an amount together so that I can try to get it on before our next meeting, unless you want to wait till the next meeting, it's fine with that too.
I would
I'll hold off.
make a motion to give you the ability to present the amount to Finance Committee that's necessary.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And our last item.
Proclamation. So I printed it and left it at work, but my, listen, it's been a day. My idea was that March 28th, we do a proclamation day for Mr. Turgaryn, for all you've done for our community and it being your birthday. You don't get a vote on this, or you're going to get upvoted on this, actually, I think is what's about to happen.
What's the fuss?
What do you mean, what's the fuss? All you've done for us and this community, all our kids, all the kids that have grown into that.
I think she just blamed you for me.
No, I don't, I don't blame him for that.
I was the one that realized that he was half married.
Look at you, you saved his life. You've done more than probably anybody for this community, so. And we appreciate everything you do. So I think it's only right, it's only fitting. It needs to happen.
I think you two need to vote on that.
Well, I motion it.
I will gladly second and this is the end of our open meeting before we go into executive. And again, I would like to thank you for all your time that you spent.
All you taught us. I didn't get to sit next to you as long as I wished, but.
I'm sorry for that.
I am grateful for being able to learn as much as I have from you over a short period of time. And I appreciate you, everything you've done.
I leave it, knowing that you two are diligent in the type of work that you do. You do follow-ups well. And you, you try to have a share here as possible when people come before you. If they've not done anything, hopefully the town is a better place for my being around all these years.
Definitely.
It's not, it's not a hopeful thing. It is, it is a true statement that the town is better off because you've been part of it. You've certainly always been willing to share your wisdom on how to handle matters, how to move forward with things, how to handle challenges that are before us.
Wise cracking.
You definitely getting some good wisecracks every now and then.
You're going to be some big shoes to fill.